You're hereby notified that a workshop meeting of the Black City Commission is called to be held at the regular meeting place of the Black City Commission at City Hall 201, North Second Street, Placot, Florida, commencing at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, June 24, 2013. The purpose of this meeting is to hold a workshop concerning wastewater treatment plant improvement, sludge treatment system, and biocallis management facility at the wastewater treatment plant. We will now have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Banzant, would you please lead us in the invocation?
We let you.
And the pledge of allegiance, one please name.
Lord God, thank you so much for this time, and Lord, thank you for this city, and I pray that you'll give everyone wisdom and discernment to serve the people of the city and meet the needs that are so strong, and we commit this time into your hands, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Go call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner Bourne.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
And Commissioner Norwood is not present yet.
We will now move into our public comment section. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none but close public comment, we'll now move into our item number two on the agenda, wastewater treatment plant improvement, sludge treatment system, and biocallis management. Brian, can you please come forward?
Brian Cass, Superintendent of the Black, City of Placot wastewater treatment facility, 113 Gaxon Road. As we mentioned before, the wastewater plant is working on, has its life expectancy. It was built, and with a 20-year life expectancy, we're reaching 30 years now. Some of our equipment is starting to fail. The parts and components are obsolete. We just can't buy the parts no more. Something's gonna have to be done pretty soon, otherwise we're gonna face much more serious issues in the future as far as this equipment might just fall down, fall apart, may be able to cause us not to operate the wastewater plant the way we currently are, may have to shut down completely. Brought some layouts, David brought some layouts we're able to look at. Currently, the things we're talking about is the biocallis handling on the plant. The digesters themselves are failing. We did a workshop last year, I'm not sure if everybody's seen the pictures of the equipment. Digestors have rust holes in them. The methane lines are clogged up, the heater is obsolete, been repaired over and over again, and components of that have been shut off to keep it running, so it's not running optimal. Our natural gas bill goes up every year because it was designed to run with natural gas and methane. Over these years, the methane's clogged up, we can no longer use it to its full potential, so we're having to go more and more with straight natural gas to heat our digester. That's one of the components that's failing, our belt press is, it's on its last leg. That's the part, the components that are obsolete. As everybody knows, we took some lightning strikes last year. It took me up to two months to find the parts to fix the belt press. All of it because the parts are obsolete, they don't make them, they don't stop them any longer. What they actually had to do was go to the junkyard and find a similar piece of equipment that had the same board in it, remove the board and repair it and send it to us. It took two months and it was way expensive. This is originally a $600 board, it cost me over $2,500 to replace. I can't promise you in the future if it goes out again, I can replace it. Might not be able to find no more. It's just, we're living on pins and needles with this. It's gotten that bad. We did workshops, we did some studies last year, we paid Ayers and Associates to do a study on what we could do to fix this issue. There was three alternatives, repair the equipment we have now to the same, convert it into an aerobatic digestion system, we're currently anaerobic, which is no air, aerobic would be air. And the third option was to convert to a repertory system, which is BCR. Mr. Kemp did a study, and it was determined that BCR was the best economical fix for this situation. The system that they proposed takes care of virtually everything I am on board about today. It wipes out the digesters, won't need them no more. Without the digester, we would not need the heater, the recirculation pumps any longer. What it doesn't touch is the belt press, which is included in our package. They would be replacing our belt press with a different form of solids treatment. Originally, we had meant with the belt press, but we were familiar with it. Trying to get the project in here, we may be willing to go with a different system, like a screw press or a centrifuge, something of that nature. It's a little less expensive than a belt press, and a little less hands-on as far as operation. BCR assured us that they'd give us all the training and time we need to learn this new I don't want to keep rehashing the same stuff, the equipment's old, it's obsolete, it's gonna cause a lot of trouble in the future. If y'all have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, I would like for David, or, I see BCR's got their presentation up on the slide, if you would prefer them to give their presentation on their system to start looking into what we can do.
Question from you.
Yes, sir.
Is solids going to be like, I think in here, it says it's grabbing 15%, believe, 15% solids, that dryness?
Yes, sir, it'll run about 15% dry.
Okay. Is screw press, you have the capacity of going up to 30% probably for the screw press? Is there a, and you said the screw press is cheaper than the belt press?
From what I've been told, I don't have much experience with screw presses myself, but what I've been told, they are less expensive to purchase and operate.
My understanding that a screw press is a lot more, the screw press is a lot easier to operate, I don't know about cost. I know we just priced a screw press a few months back, and very, you know, it's not totally expensive, but we, not inexpensive of course, but I think it's, I don't know how, I don't know what the belt press is gonna cost us, and I don't know how many pounds or how many tons a day that you're actually looking at producing. Have you guys went out and looked at it in specs and yet owned the presses?
Not on the screw press. The first time we did the study, we looked at replacing the belt press with a new belt press, many for the mere, for the mere entirety we are with that operation.
How are we planning on, are we still planning on putting in biocallis to plant? In order to handle solids that come off, are we still looking at putting in sludge beds? As we currently do today?
Well, currently, we apply our solids to the land bill. We only use the smudge drying beds and cases of the belt press again. For now, we can't fix it. With the new proposed system, BCR would collect our solids and call them off to their facility to make compost. It would remove all of our liability as far as biocallis. Currently, we are responsible for, they say like 80 to 90 years. But them coming in, who would press or screw press the solids, they would pick up the final product and be their responsibility.
With the price going from over 3 billion dollars, are we looking at about 1.4 billion dollars now?
That was the latest proposal. I would like to build a bit further to make sure we haven't been covered on the city's side.
Well, I was gonna ask the question, what was the form, is there any performance guaranteed along with the 1.4 dollar equipment?
I would divert, I would divert that question to BCR, they'd be more able to answer that question than I can. Let me ask all that right now.
Brian, you said you're on pins and needles, and something got broke tomorrow, and it did, the ultimate possibility would be that you would shut down. Well, what's your contingency plan should the ultimate happen? You can't just shut down, the city can't just shut down.
Well, we would have approximately maybe a month and a half of using our drying beds to find a solution to the problem.
Okay, so it's not like overnight, then?
It's not overnight. If we lost the same components I lost last year, which is in a control panel for the belt press, the city would have to find $25,000 to $30,000 immediately to replace that control panel. Meanwhile, while it was on its way to being delivered and set up, we would have to go to our drying beds. All the drying beds is, we have to put one probably every two to three weeks, they take possibly six to eight weeks to dry. So once I filled up all five of them, the only option then would be to have a trucker come in, haul our sludge to Jacksonville or someplace else.
Have you, have you thought about putting some contingency plans together so that if a particular component failed, you'd have a plan to go to to try to basically hold us in, keep us in operation until a permanent fix could be made? In other words, you said if your panel went, you'd be spending 20 grand, 20, 25 grand to buy a new panel. If your belt press went, you're gonna have a problem, you have to use the drying beds. And my question simply is, you've thought about the different components that could fail, have you got contingency plans as to what you'd do in the short term if one of those components failed?
The best case scenario, if we have total failure of the belt press and we cannot use it and our beds were full, BCR would be able to bring their trailer down here and accept our sludge through their trailer for treatment.
Yeah, my asking was, the plan was, I was just asking if you've got a contingency plan in place?
Yes.
So that tomorrow morning we wake up, you wake up and you got a problem with something, you've got a plan that you would use to address that problem until the council decided how they were gonna fix it on a long-term basis?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess one of the last questions that I have, one other question today, what, are we in jeopardy of not being compliant with our permit at all, called emergency issues?
Currently, no, but I can't promise that in six months to a year, I can answer that same question with the same answer. That's one of the reasons why we're here, is to try to take care of these issues before we have compliance issues, which could lead to fines and penalties and costs even more trying to get this fixed.
I appreciate that, too.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kemp, for coming forward with the presentation. We'll have BCR over.
Good evening, I'm Tom Phillips with BCR. Thanks for taking the time to let us come and present. We have been working with your city and Ayers consulting on this problem that is your wastewater plant for several years now, and I wanted to take you through a little bit of history. I don't know if everybody here is fully familiar with kind of the history of how we got here. But in May of 2013, we first engaged with the city regarding improvements that needed to be made at the wastewater plant. By way of background, our company goes through literally hundreds of wastewater treatment plants a year throughout the country to evaluate them and provide information on their current operations as well as solutions to problems. Secondly, we went through a study that David Kemp with Ayers conducted and were selected as a biocallis treatment solution in September 2014 relative to other options, and that study is available to you as well if you need it. We had some special circumstances to try to get around some other issues with respect to funding. I know Ms. Brown asked us to try to come up with a solution where we could maintain operations within the current operating budget, and then we had the added problem of trying to figure a way to finance this project virtually at no cost to the city. So we jumped through a bunch of hoops. You should know, we worked very closely with the FDIP in the state of Florida, they have actually endorsed us. We were able to tell them about the Placot situation, the financing component, and they came back to us and said that you guys would be a candidate for virtually a 0% loan to fund this project. This is part of a solution that we think we came up with that meets all your criteria to do this. One thing we had to do from the study to today is we had to figure out how to drop the cost. The study had a cost in it that was in excess of $3 million. We went back to the drawing board and worked with Brian to figure out some creative ways to drop that cost, and we got it down to 1.4 billion. We met with Brian again last Friday, and he expressed that he wanted to take the dome off the top of the two digesters off as a part of the project. That raised the cost, the total cost to 1.5 million dollars. We can go through the solution in depth, any depth that you want, but we're standing here today basically to say that the FDIP is prepared to make a loan in the amount of 1.5 million dollars at zero interest over 20 years. In addition to that, we believe we can offer you a firm fixed price of 1.5 million dollars to put in our Clean B treatment system, a de-watering device, most likely a screw press, install turnkey under design build agreement for a fixed price of 1.5 million dollars. You should also know that our company has a history of 100% project success in doing these kinds of things. We've done over $100 million in projects of public partnerships with municipalities just like Placot, and as I said, we've been endorsed by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and we are certified by EPA. There are some interesting steps that need to happen, and frankly, time has gotten away from us over the last two or three years we've been working on this. We had originally sat down with the city earlier in the year and laid out a timeframe that led to planning and design fee application with the FDIP for $75,000. That never got, that got applied for, it never got accepted, our design, part of our agreement was never returned to us, and literally, if there's a deadline of June 28th to apply for that money to pay for the work, the design work that's been done up to this point, if that's missed, the city's gonna have to start that process all over again. Also, the next meeting that construction dollars can be applied for is November the 10th. All the documentation that's involved in their checklist has to be filed by September 28th if that's to happen. We are working with the FDIP, Ten Banks specifically, to find out if we can treat this as a special circumstance and circumvent their regular process. We don't have an answer on that, on that yet. Brian's previous comment on contingency plans, our system can be installed and deployed on a permanent basis in a little as 90 to 120 days. The reality is that that is the absolute fastest anything can be done to circumvent your digesters. If your digesters go down, that's the fastest anything can be done, short of mobile de-watering or something like that happening, and that is a very expensive proposition. So I just want to mention that to you for your consideration. You're gonna have quite a bill for that interim period before something's done if the plant dies for whatever reason. Also, as a next step, if you guys decide to proceed with this, we'll need to promptly complete the design build agreement that we've already provided the city, and we'll need your help to work with us to complete the FDIP checklist to try to get this rolling. I did want to say, and I don't mean this to be a negative, but if we delay any further, we run serious risks of costs going up, perhaps dramatically as it relates to that. I don't know how much background you want, we don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but we've got many examples of successful projects across the state of Florida, and we're happy if you need to reach out or would like to reach out to any of those communities. We can take you to see sites where our Clean B is in operation and talk to those operators themselves if that's valuable. We've done more installations of biocallis treatment systems in the state of Florida than any other provider of those.
Closest one is Stark, Rick.
Sir?
Stark's the closest one.
Stark is a neutralizer, yes, sir. The closest Clean B right now is Elachim.
No, actually NAS.
NAS Jacks, I'm sorry.
Got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
On the, you said that the project started out over 3 million dollars and dropped from over 3 million down to like 1.5. What all got removed in order to get to that number and from the equipment implementation standpoint?
Yes, sir. There are some things that weren't absolute needs that were taken out. There were also some sacrifices made, instead of putting a new building around, as we figured out how to get our chemical tanks under your existing poll warrant that is at the plant. So we did some value engineering to figure out ways that we could shave costs out of the project that didn't impact the operations of the system. You wanna?
Actually, I'll let David Kemp speak a little bit, he did a study last year, and he opened the doors.
David Kemp, Ayers Associates. I just wanted to, since this is a new commission, and we started this process last year, I just wanted to bring a little bit of context on the study, so you understand what it's for. First of all, it wasn't an engineering study per se, it was a cost analysis of alternatives that we looked at for the city to rectify the situation, we looked at anaerobic, anaerobic and the BCR system, as Brian said. We didn't look at any other engineering elements as far as design or preliminary design of the project. We were strictly tasked to look at and evaluate the most cost-effective system to put in, including going with the belt press. We looked at alternatives like screw press, there was some discussion of centrifuges, things like that. But when you look at what has been asked about how to get 3, 2 million to 1.4, well, when we looked at this project, we looked at it as a whole, not just the BCR system, we looked at the existing anaerobic system and the tanks being decommissioned, the piping in there taken out, and things like that. So I think it's important that you understand that the project or the cost evaluation that was done at the time is not being considered as a whole now. I think we talked about this in the meeting that we had, I remember doing this, there's certain things we can do to not do the whole project, and that's what we're talking about today really, is doing probably the essential things that need to be done. One of the elements that I made a point of, and Brian kind of made a point of, was on the anaerobic digesters. Those things have never been cleaned for 30 years, they've been just like they are right now. The tops are deteriorated, and part of the estimate in this that I did for the city was to take those tops off, have those things salvaged and decommissioned, and have those tanks pumped out and cleaned out, and then make an evaluation of the structural integrity of those tanks for future use. So it didn't just get 3, 2 million because we eliminated process equipment, we're eliminating some of the things that were in the original estimate, which as a scope was requested by the city to look at, because we're looking at this thing as a whole, not just the sludge treatment system itself, so.
Basically, the one thing I'm concerned about, just bringing BCR in, is that we have to have our digesters cleaned out. We can't put the system in and leave the city with the bill of getting this job done. The city doesn't have the money to do this. It could be upwards of $300,000. A gym that spoke with me last week, started looking, they may be able to help us out and get the digesters cleaned out in their scope, is what he just told me. They might have some more answers for that.
Well, the 1.5 million covers plenty of the tanks. Brian came back to us and said, you know, that's, we gotta do the whole puzzle, we can't, you know, threw it hard to do any of it, so we not only want to go in and treat the biocallis to a Class B going off your plant, we'll put new de-watering in, and there's two RES pumps that need to be replaced, one of them's down now, and there's three valves that are in need of help. So we agreed to put, we'll buy the pumps, and Brian will put them in. The valve's the same thing. And then he asked about, well, we just can't leave the digesters sitting there, it's a hazard, and I agree with him, just want with David, or David's study. So we talked to a friend of BCR, who's a contractor, and he's agreed to help us out with this. We'll pull in some favors and we'll have that done under 1.5. Where would, if you implemented that project, where would that put us in terms of other components that are not being replaced, that you utilize from a standpoint of the end of its life expectancy?
With the BCR system coming in, all the equipment I have problems with right now will be eradicated. The base needs is to get the BCR system in there, clean our digesters, remove the associated piping, decommission the heaters and stuff like that. The tank itself, we can leave the tank in upright for now, we may be able to use, find a future use for that. So all the equipment that we're talking about, that is obsolete and damaged, will be taken care of.
A lot of the stuff that we were talking about, took off, is the labor, putting these pumps and things in for the city. The city is capable of doing it, so they'll do it, we don't have to charge for that. The tanks themselves, we'll get the domes off and set them out there, and we'll clean the grit and everything out of the inside of them, and then the city can clean the lines out from it. We're using the same lines, or part of the lines, to feed our system. There's a 14,000 gallon holding tank at the end of the de-watering building, there aren't enough people that have been out there. But anyway, instead of using the pump systems that pull from that tank and send it to the belt press, we're using a diverter valve off your RES system, return activated sludge as a pressure line, we're getting our feed straight from that, and you don't need pumps. So you don't have the energy consumption there anymore, you don't have the repair bills, and this type of thing. So you go ahead and look at the whole system, and you try to set that system up for one least amount of labor involved in it, least amount of pumping equipment involved in it because of repairs, and an end product, and the end product would be a Class B biocallis, treated and de-watered here at the facility, and part of our plan, we'll take the biocallis and plant apply them or take them to a compost facility.
How much more would you need in order to be a Class A?
I'm sorry?
How much more would you need in order to be a Class A?
When it goes to the compost facility, it'll go to a Class A.
But to treat onsite, Class A would be substantially more expensive, right?
Yes, upwards of $5 or $6 million more.
I want to know how long it'll last, you know, this thing? If you do this, how many years will this take us before it'll be, there'll be the...
It's a great, it's a great question. I can't give you an exact answer, what I can tell you is, we will warrant the system for 20 years. I'll be surprised if it's not running 50 years from now, there's very little to go wrong with the system.
I wonder if that affects...
On the chemical treatment system, these are very small pumps, relative to digestion, we eliminate not over 95% electric consumption because we're using very, very small horsepower equipment, small chemical pumps, things of that nature, that can be replaced easily, cheaply, they're not likely to become obsolete, those kinds of things.
Our system with the de-watering involved in it, the electric bill's like 600 bucks a year? So you have a lot.
But getting back to Commissioner Bourne's question, I'm sure familiar with the concept of value engineering, but if I heard your number right, maybe I did it. David, your original estimate was 3.2?
3.2, that included, yes, it was.
And now we're at 1.5, that's a... And now we're at 1.5, that's a, that's 55% reduction in cost through value engineering?
That's, that's not entirely on value engineering. What, what has been eliminated is that, understand, this was a preliminary estimate, so there's a contingency put on this. These, these folks know exactly what their system costs and what it's going to be to do what they're telling you today. When we looked at this, we looked at all the different processes equally as far as the scope of work that would need to be done.
Well, I guess, but just to cut to the chase, do you agree that all of the needs would be met, including removal of equipment that otherwise could pose a hazard with the proposal that's being made?
From what they're saying, that is, that was in the details, I don't know what the details are as far as how they're going to do the, removing the equipment, but they, they're telling you that they have a contractor, that's a friend of theirs who can do this for them, so I have to take that at face value. But just to go back to the context on the numbers again, if you look at the VCR system only, because in my report, which is, which you probably should take a look at to evaluate, since you'd have, probably had a chance to do it, since a lot of you are new, you know, we were probably at about 1.5 million for the VCR system only before. Now that included a contingency factor placed on that, because there was no engineering design done at that time. And the value that I had to clean the digester tanks was about 150,000. And then the value of the belt press was about 2.80. So I'm trying to get you to where you can see the reduction from, it wasn't really 3.2 to 1.4, it's not comparing apples to apples, we're looking, you have to look at the context of where part of the system that they're advocating to put in.
Well, even 1.5 and 1.80 don't make 3.2, so the question simply is, do you agree as the city's engineering firm, that the proposal that is being presented right now would not only provide us a system, but would eliminate the equipment that Brian says we couldn't, we couldn't afford to leave onsite, like the digesters?
Well, if they're, if they're saying they're going to take the tops off, and they're going to demolition those or salvage those and get them offsite, and they're going to take everything out of the anaerobic digesters, and that's exactly what we advocated. The only thing that was in there that I didn't hear them say was dismantling of all the piping that's not necessary in that, that system, which we included as part of the demolition work.
To put a fine point on this, some of the, some of the steps that are left out, what, what we're proposing to do is take the domes off the top of the digester under, under our price, set them off to the side. Brian has indicated the city would likely scrap those out themselves, so that's, we would be responsible for taking those away or dealing with that. Secondly, we'll clean out the digesters, but in the original, the demolition of the digester was, was a part of the project, that's not going to happen either.
I understand.
I think that VCR system, the best case scenario, but he's correct, I did mention that the city may be willing to scrap the domes and the piping and collect the money on that, or pay a company to come in and keep the money and do the work. That's not set in stone, the city has not agreed to do that. And one thing on Jim, I don't know if you guys have money in there for all the instructions that you mentioned, that I said that we can, we can do a lot of pipe work, pipe work in which we could do a lot of it, but we would not be able to do 100%.
A great setup. Our people are going to be there helping, you know. This is important to us, to make this go together smoothly and work properly, so whatever assistance you need on it, we'll, we'll do it.
That's what we totally work on.
Look, I'm not an engineer, and I don't know, some of these people may be close to being an engineer, maybe a rootless or, but I, but he said turnkey system for 1.5, is what he said, turnkey, which I understand the meaning, we walk in and it, and our guys turn on switches and it goes. Is that, or is that not what's, what's being proposed?
That's it, turnkey.
Okay.
$1.5 million, you go in there and hit start.
Cool.
All right.
And that includes the efficiency of the system, are we losing any efficiency?
No, we're gaining.
We're gaining, okay. And we're going to have the reliability, he says 20, 20 years, he guaranteed, man run?
Yes, sir.
Brian, so we understand that that's, we understand what turnkey, key means, right?
I do, yes, sir.
So our guys, our, that turning wrench is put trying to put pipe together and that kind of thing, right?
I just, I don't want to confuse turnkey with, the cleaning of digesters out is not relevant to their system operating, that's why I want to make sure that.
Let me be, let me be clear about, about our company's understanding, okay? We will put in a treatment system and a dewatering system that is turnkey, meaning we, we will install it, it will work, your operator comes, hits the start button, it starts, hits the stop button, it stops. We will then take your material offsite so you don't have to worry about it after it comes out of that process.
And how long would you guys guarantee in it, guarantee installation and the equipment?
20 years.
Okay.
The, this has to be, for this to work under this pricing, I mean, we were asked to do some fairly spectacular things here, get the price down, try to work out funding, all of that. The other stuff that needs to be done that's not really related to the treatment and dewatering of the biosolids, has to be a collaborative effort. We have to work together to figure out ways to minimize the cost, the labor, everything else.
Well, you're talking about other than cleaning out the digestion?
Yes, sir.
You've already said that part of that turnkey is getting rid of what's in the digestion?
Yes, sir.
But getting the digester tanks demolished, getting the piping removed, and that kind of stuff, is not included in your 1.5 bid?
It, we, we, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We will work collaboratively with Brian and the city staff.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand it, I, yeah.
I just want to be very, very clear about that.
Right there on that. One other question, what's the annual maintenance cost that we're calling to maintain? I know that you're guaranteeing it for 20 years, but.
Yeah, so, so you have the?
No, it's 7,000 hard, but.
Roughly $7,000 a year, it's, it's the minimum as compared to what you're spending now maintaining your belt, just your belt press probably. But what goes along with this is a 20-year service agreement for things like, we, we ensure that, that you don't run out of chemical to feed the system, we, that service agreement covers the hauling and disposition of the material.
What's the cost of the service, service agreement? Service agreement, what's the cost? Is there a cost associated with that service agreement?
Is it built in, or is it?
It is built in.
Okay, all right.
Now, we looked at your, your OFEX, 210,000, we looked at your OFEX, and Brian says, the only way this is going to work is we stay under your OFEX.
Your what?
Operating.
Your current operating space?
Current operating, I'm sorry, current operating.
Oh, that's cool, I just didn't know which code you used.
I always wanted to do it with Operation Excellence, but, okay, thanks.
What it takes for Brian to operate your wastewater plant annually, there's a budget, it's $210,000. He told us, he said, the only way we're going to make this thing come about is the pricing for this, the service plan, everything stays under that number, okay? That will mean that the city of Blackhead doesn't have to raise a budget, they don't have to increase their, their service rates, and stay where they're at.
Just to make sure everybody's clear, I believe, Jim, that number has also included the, the disposal fee of the solids?
Yes, yes.
So we're currently not spending any money on, on that bill to grid.
Which means we would have to revisit it a little.
There's about another $37,000 included in that figure that we are currently not spending.
But that would be under this number.
But I would also like to see if Brian looked for some beneficial reuse of our solids, that there are some, there are some beneficial uses out there, but we got to go out and look for them, so that we could actually probably make some money off our solids as well.
I think that was part of the original thinking we were talking about last year, the combo system, it would be built in our facility, we can do combos.
That was just more, but there's more out there, and just get people out and look for it.
I just wanted to bring up one other thing, Brian, you just keep standing up there so you can get me out of here, but one of the things that we looked at in this study was that needed some further looks to see at, was probably, you know, we're just talking about the sludge system here, but we looked at the factors that affect the process, the liquid treatment side, and the options and the flexibility that Brian now has. So one of the things that I had in the report to look at, make sure that, and I think we need to probably have that discussion with VCR, because I think, I think it's, I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure that we're not losing flexibility for Brian in the future, based on the conditions at which we have to deliver the sludge to their system to be successful. I don't think there is per se, but that was one concern that I had, was it this in the study? That's why I'm recommending that you take a look at it before you, as you make your decision, because you worked, you guys didn't get to go through, James did, but not everybody got to go through the whole process with us. So this system came out cost-effective, number one, but again, we didn't look at all the other design elements that might have gone in, that affects the whole plant as a whole.
So, so you, when you talk about liquids, you mean that the water or the liquid content of the sludge that's being delivered to, to the process?
The effluent or the water side, which goes through the aeration system and clarification and chlorine contact, there's certain elements that tie into the, to the sludge handling side as well, that, as your consultant, I'd be remiss to say that this just cut, it's just not there, but I think Brian was, we've talked about this quite a bit, we want to make sure we don't lose any flexibility we have on the treatment that he has to maintain the quality.
Flexibility means you can put more liquid in the sludge now?
Making sure you get your treatment efficiencies on the effluent that goes out of the plant, is what we want to talk about.
If certain equipment goes out, I have contingency plans and redundancy where I can divert or, or change treatment to still meet our level of treatment in the plant. I want to make sure we don't lose that flexibility.
Well, do you lose it with this system?
What it for us, it removes the primary clarifier. I don't think it's going to be a big harm for us, because I have a lot of the flow diverted around that now to bring any food into the plant, but I would want the main thing, that's like a buffer zone. You know, the storm situation, we get it, it flips a lot of water, that primary clarifier is like a buffer. There's one reason why I wouldn't want to demolish everything without using any longer. If the primary is left in place, we may be able to use that for a storm surge tank in the event of a storm.
As a, as an example, the anaerobic digesters, one of the reasons we looked at getting that material out of there and salvaging those tanks is that maybe you've beneficial used to Brian to, for emergency purposes or things like that. So that's why that was in our original estimate, to take everything out of there, clean it out, and have it accessible for Brian. The primary clarifier is another example, it's going to be another tank that could be used for flow equalization, things like that. So that's why I'm bringing that up, just as a point of information and consideration, doesn't really affect what they're going to do per se, but.
Well, I'd like to add, we've, we've done a tremendous amount of this, and in virtually all cases, when you take digestion tanks, the primary clarifiers offline, it's very often that they'll be repurposed, they're repurposed for flow equalization, they're repurposed for reused water storage, and reused water storage is valuable, I don't know if you're selling it here, but that's, that's a consideration we talked to Brian about. There, there are many uses for tanks, if those tanks are solid, which, or sound, which, there appears to be some question on that in this case, but you can reuse those tanks, and the only reason you can reuse them is because through the deployment of this system, you don't need them anymore for your biosolids treatment.
And all the stuff that he's talking about, that can neither, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If we'll, we'll take offline, VCR would never, ever say demolish a tank. Not our decision, there's too many options around keeping it, too many benefits behind keeping the tanks, whether it's the clarifier, primary clarifier, or digesters, and we can take you, every one of you, we can take you to plants that we've done this at. You can see it, you can talk to the operators, Brian's already been there. That we've taken primary clarifiers offline, digesters, thickeners, they're just not required if you run the plant away. We've talked through this with Brian, that we can do it.
David brought up a, a legitimate concern, I, I guess my next question would be then, at what point do the hydraulic loading affect the plant, affect the efficiency of the plant?
So, so a couple of characteristics of the system. One is, you get at least a two times increase in the, in the ability to handle biosolids. For, for instance, if two times more waste came into the plant, you could process twice as many biosolids than you do today. So you increase your biosolids handling factor. Secondly, the, the water that returns to the front of the plant after dewatering, it's called the center or the filtrate, has several properties that are not there today. One is you've got solids that are falling off the belt press, going down the drain, returning to the front of the plant that you re-treat. In, in our experience, that can be up to 20 to 30% of what you're treating at the front of the plant. Think, if you think about that, you're just recycling that, that goes away. Secondly, because you're not digesting the material, digestion allows the nutrients, the nitrogen and phosphorus to resolubilize in the, in the water, because you have a holding time, and those digesters are typically 30 to 60 days, depending on the application. We're treating the biosolids in 10 minutes, taking digestion offline, those nu, the nitrogen and phosphorus remain bound in the biosolids. So it goes, it leaves in the truck with the solid material and doesn't return through the center and the filtrate back to the front of the plant. This is key, because your BOD loading will actually go down.
My, my question to Brian was, when you went to visit other plants, did you ask them about the BOD, TSS, metals, nutrients, efficiencies? What, what they were before installation, and what they were after the installation?
I didn't get to that point specifics, but I did ask them if their plant was, was operating better or worse after VCR, and every one of them said exactly better. The lower it was, the lower it worked.
And I understand what, what VCR is saying, I understand it, and that's the reason why they put these references in our package. We need to use these references and ask those questions, and just so that we, just so that we will know upfront. There, there's, so there's no, there's nothing that's ambiguous, nothing that's misleading and that kind of thing, we have the information in front of us. I think it's a good system, and I mean, I really do, I really like the system, I really like what you guys are trying to do, but I just want to make sure that when we fix one thing, we don't cause issues somewhere else.
Absolutely.
And knowing the type of rains that we get, and I know that you're probably going to be feeding all of the supernate to a thickener, a, a, a thickener, a thickening tank probably, in order to get, to get the solids thicker before it goes to the belt, belt press, but my question still would be, what happens when we get a 10-year, a 10, a 20, a 25-year rain, a 100-year rain storm? And then you get all, you get all this liquid, and you got to treat it all, but also what's going through your holding tank is not the 0.2 or 0.3% solids that you originally designed for, now you're getting 0.00 to 0.03 solids going there. So therefore, if everything's out of whack, and how long will the plant be upset from that kind, from that kind of event?
Sure, that was the thing that David talked about, I like redundancy. If the thickener tank is still there, I can always waste, instead of going to, straight to VCR, I can convert waste into the thickener, and put it out there, and control that, or we can reduce the number of day required for the system.
But at some point, somebody's going to have to tell the commission, without the contingency and what is, and, and caveats, this system will work, or it won't, or it will work, but only if you add these components or include these components, otherwise, we're going to dance around this thing forever and still not know what we've done.
I've visited a few different places that are, are in operation, and what I've seen, if the system doesn't work, it will work.
But Brian, you say, then you say, but I need redundancy, so I need to keep this tank, and I need to keep that tank, and, and the question that I have is, what are you saying you need? Or you need their system, but then that doesn't address the other issues of the tanks that you need? And, and the bottom line is, is the proposal that's on the table right now going to give you the redundancy that you say you need? The system and the redundancy?
Yes, it will. And redundancy is just a personal preference of mine, I like to have in my operations. And Commissioner Noble mentioned a 25-year rain, any, any facility gets a rain like that, they're going to have issues, they're going to have trouble. No place is going to run out of zones with that much rain coming in all of a sudden.
And then the next question I've got is, you mentioned like June 28, which is four days from now?
Yes, sir.
And what's going to be done by then?
The, the.
An application was made by the city to the EDP for planning and design dollars in the amount of $75,000, right? That, that money has to be requested by June 28, or the FDP pulls that money back and you have to, you'll have to fill out that application, and how's it requested?
Let me ask this question, you're probably interested in this answer, is, say we had to do that, what's the timeline to get it reestablished?
You miss it, you mean, you miss the 28?
Can we get it done?
Ma'am?
Can we get it done?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All you have to do is tell the FDUP you want to draw that money. What's the, what's the next date if we don't? It's, it's going to be the November 10 meeting.
What, a re-application process, or just you maintain your current application and then just?
No, you're gonna have to reapply.
But you say it's already done, so it's just a thing of getting it.
Yes, ma'am.
To them, would you email it back to them, or?
We, we can, we can hold your hand through that process, it's not complicated.
So we have to, so you guys, you're telling us you have to build, submit the application?
It's already submitted.
It's already submitted?
You just have to submit the draw request. That, that starts a process for the FDUP that expects that you'll apply for the construction dollars for the project at that November 10 meeting.
The $75,000, you're talking about the $75,000 seed money to get things going, right?
Right.
That's what I'm talking about. The rest of the money would be through the November meeting, because they have to be certain elements of design, that kind of thing, to submit to the FDUP to have that funding secured.
So the application's already been submitted?
Because the $75,000, there's, there's way though.
So it's already been approved and all?
Yes, sir.
They changed the, they changed some of the aspect of what the ramifications around getting, what the requirements are. You're required to have 100% design now to go for the construction money. That's a, that's a pretty heavy thing, so. There's just a lot to it that you have to get through, but that's one of the big things.
And you all feel like if we decide to do this, we can get it done?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, I mean, to be fair, we, the only reason we've gotten down to this price, we really wanna help the city get this done. We have been working pro bono up to this point for over two years, and I'm not saying this is what you need to do, we need to educate you to the standard that you'd like, but we're, from our perspective, if we're gonna do it, we'd like to do it, and not, not wait another cycle. That's certainly up to you and your decision, but.
How does the next cycle work? Would it be next year?
Well, you're gonna wait till November 10 to file the, they have a planning and design and construction phase that you have to go through. It starts, if we miss it, you start all over again. So it's gonna, it's gonna push your application for construction dollars very likely in next year.
Instead of the, instead of the planning and design being done, that's a whole quarter that will have to slip. So if we don't do it now, then start November, you'll have to go through planning and design part of it, because that's a requirement for them. You can combine the planning and design, but you can't combine the construction and design. So that's, that's six months there.
I just wanna clarify with, with, redundancy of that support, that I would add is not protect against BCR system. It's redundancy on how operating my plant, in case we have an abnormal weather event.
I'm Jim.
If there's an abnormal weather event, or something in the plant process that isn't working in the water, it's not to protect against BCR, it's to protect against abnormal events in the plant process.
And from experience, I'd like to add, that's just smart. It's, it's very smart what David is saying, to repurpose those tanks, to help protect you in the event of big storms or, or things like that.
And just so we're clear on the numbers, that was one of the things I was just talking to David about. We were, in the September of 1924 report, we're talking about alternative seed.
Right.
Which had a cost of 3.1 million at the total numbers overall for.
That was to do, the whole project is a whole, all the different elements, and it's still very things that we talked about.
Right, sir. And so we're able to get materially very similar scope at about a half a cost, about less than half a cost.
Again, the estimate was based on not having engineering information, so it is conservative, because we have, now they've just have the engineering, they know what they have to do with their system. And they've looked at, again, alternative sludge de-watering equipment, things like that, because we had just design and construction administration, well, you won't be doing that, because if they're gonna do a turnkey thing. Because when we did the estimate originally, we had to consider the anaerobic and aerobic systems, which would have been done more of a design bid build type arrangement, where this is more of a turnkey sole source.
I don't think anybody's questioning or criticizing your estimate. I think everybody's just wanting to make sure that when you get something for half price, a lot of times you don't get what you thought you were getting. I think that's what we're just trying to figure out, and.
And that's why I wanted to put the context on it, that this was looked at more of a design bid build type project rather than, because it's kinda hard to mix apples and oranges, when you got, those two systems will not be sole sourced, they would be competitively bid. Their system is not.
Hey, what was your percentage of plus amounts in your estimate?
Well, when we did the construction part of it, I had a 25% contingency, and I had 20% for engineering and construction administration. And that's typical if you do an engineering estimate, okay? These folks don't have that in their estimate, because they've got control of everything. When you have a design bid build type project, as you're aware, then a lot is hanging out about the dollars that are gonna be bid, and what the market is and things like that. So when you don't have all the engineering elements done or design, you have to be a little more conservative, and that's why it's the way it is.
And so if we, if we take out the 40% to 45% reduction based upon your estimate, then it puts us within a quarter meter, so this.
Right, right.
Most engineering, right, so the minus 30%, 40%.
Because typically, you do a cost evaluation, then you do a preliminary engineering report, which would be more fine-tuned, because you'd have some better information on the design part of it, and then you'd go to the, to the design documents, and then you could fine-tune that. So this was like a preliminary, preliminary step to determine what might be most cost-effective as far as the alternatives that we evaluate.
So on, on that number, that's the hard number that will take care of everything in terms of expected case. Then you got the, you'll have a worst case, and you'll have, you have expected worse, and which is, you got the expected, which is, you're spot on, and your worst case is, hey, this is way outside of our range. So we're.
Worst case, worst case, pretty good.
Yep. So we're, we're good on that.
If, even if you look at the numbers that I had for the BCR system by itself, I think it was like 1.2 billion. That did not include the valve pressures, it was about 280. So if you start looking at it, and then of course, engineering elements, which I'm not sure what they're spending for engineering, it's probably nowhere near what I had in there, because, you know, you've got the preliminary engineering, final design, and construction administration. They're handling all that internally, so they have more control over those costs. And that's a lot of the reason why they're able to offer this the way they are, and that's kinda.
Right. The reason I ask is, because a lot of time you get in, you start designing something, you start implementing, and then you say, well, hey, we didn't expect XYZ, and it's gonna cost you a little bit more for some critical pieces of equipment, and that's why I say we got worst case, best case, and expected.
It's called the dreaded change order. What I'm telling you is, for $1.5 million, I will guarantee you a 100% successful project that includes a clean-to-use trickier biosalads, a screw press to de-water your biosalads. Give him the flexibility he needs that he can reroute flows to operate the way he wants to operate, take the domes off the tank, and clean out the tanks.
Right, and we're not leaving out that.
Right. Won't get a change order from us over that number.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I hear you. Hey, we need, are there any more questions?
No, I'm just.
How was your, your next, your next?
My question would be, I would be interested in the 4, about the 28, or would we wait to the next cycle?
I think you're gonna have to. Do you have a time, this just as a workshop, is that what I'm asking?
Yes, this is a workshop, if they make a decision.
I don't think you're in a position to go forward right now, because you could hold a special meeting. Special meeting.
They could ratify it tomorrow, tomorrow's meeting.
That's right. I'm sorry, we got tomorrow night. I forgot. Yeah, you got tomorrow night. Bring it up as an emergency item tomorrow night.
Yeah. Well, in the past, they, when they made a workshop, they put it on the agenda to ratify it at the next meeting. Or we just, or do it.
It is on the agenda now, right?
No, it is not.
So you're gonna have to put it on as an emergency item, but.
And we can do that.
Can we handle this emergency? How soon, what's the soonest we can handle this emergency?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. You gonna be here, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I could get it tonight before I go home.
Well, let's do that. Let's add this as an emergency item for tomorrow, and we're gonna address it.
Yes, sir.
And we will address it for tomorrow. I will before we, before we go forward. I'll open, we've got a few citizens who've come in here. I'll open the door for public comment quickly, if there's anyone who has any questions.
A lubrication's 10:27, South 12th Street.
Proprietary process. So the only one that assesses it now. Understood, David, right? Period, the different alternative, cheaper alternatives that were considered?
It was the most cost-effective. I won't say it was substantially, but it was the most cost-effective. Number one rank, if you look at the numbers, it was the.
So I guess I was looking at them as a single-source provider, because they're the only one that provides this system.
So based on that, we wouldn't have to send out an RFP?
No, if they're the only one that could bid this system, then the RFP would only go out to them, if they're the only one that can bid this system.
I don't have a problem with BCR. I'm just, pretty, I'm pretty astounded, as usual, about these things our previous city manager did, including moving forwards or something when the commission hadn't approved it. Thank you.
That's probably moving forward without it. So, anybody else have any questions? Seeing that, closing up some time, anything else in question?